I think it had something. Nobody else wanted it. The line.
What type of?
Okay. I got this toy. I might as well play with it.
You always had one in the box before.
It disappeared. Nobody knows where it went. So, it being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this, um, meeting of the Arundel Planning Board, October twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Marty, Jamie, Bob, Coon.
Jamie Lawrie.
John Denver.
Rich Canong.
Roger Ward.
Ted Redway, Planner.
Today on the agenda, we have the minutes of the September twenty-fifth and October ninth that we have to approve of the comments. We have a new application on Mark Welch with Stone Ridge Farm gravel pit, conditional use, and may or no ordinances on the Gateway District, and then we'll hear from the town planner. Anybody have anything they wanna add to the agenda, or are you all kosher with the agenda? We're all set? You need a motion for proof?
Yeah.
Marty made the motion. Roger seconded. All those in favor? Cool. Minutes of the meetings of September twenty-fifth.
Let's have that open for discussion.
Okay. Do we need a motion first? Okay.
Under uses, third page, we had a lot of discussion, um, about the wording for the, um, single and multifamily that are part of the mixed-use project will be permitted. We agreed at last meeting that that could be interpreted that only if it's a part of the mixed-use project. Donna agreed that wasn't the intent. She was taking it back to the comp plan, and we agreed that we would look at the wording in the future. And I just think there ought to be a note, 'cause this, I know this is what's in there, but we can't lose that. Because under this new one, you're gonna have your standard, your use and your standard, the uses, single and multifamily, the standard, the way this is written, only as part of the mixed-use. And that's, that's why we should have a note, that, that end question.
Well, I don't, but this, this is the minutes of the meeting, and that was the discussion at that meeting. What you're referring to is subsequent to that meeting.
No, during the meeting.
At that meeting?
Yeah, when Donna was here, and we read, and we read through all of this. I mean, this is what is written in the comp plan, that everyone look at the wording, and we should look at the wording as well, to make sure that it's clear that single family, multifamily, and/or as part of the mixed-use can be used. That's my comment about the minutes.
Sorry, it took me a minute to figure out where we were going down already. Okay.
Also in discussion, uh, we had a town planner here, and at the time of the discussion, we were figuring out if seasonal cottages about gravel being taken off-site or whatever else on. I did mention, I did mention to the town planner, kind of, that maybe you move some of that, that we could turn on to have, if they have that much excess, seasonal cottages may wanna donate some of the, uh, ledge or whatever else on to the town site on Route One for Phil.
I, I think first we should get the, the section that Bob brought up. Let's, instead of jumping all over, let's.
I just thought you wanted.
Oh, yeah, no, and, and I, I do, I just wanna say that we're gonna, we'll take care of Bob's, and then we can work on it.
All right. I just thought that was noted already, so I mean that.
No, I appreciate it. So, how do you think we should correct that wording?
I would just, the wording, the wording is correct, 'cause that's how it's written in the comp plan. But we had a very long discussion, and it went back and forth. Some of us agreed, some of us didn't, some of us interpreted it one way. My point is, it's open to interpretation. So, a note after the uses is the board recognizes that it's open to interpretation and needs to address this in the future.
Should, should we have Ann go back to the tape and discern the, the comments between us and the chairman of the comp plan committee?
Yeah.
To add that, that essence of the conversation into the meeting, into the minutes?
You wanna get that clarified?
Well, why don't you make a motion and amend it right now, the way you want to, instead of having her go back and do that? If you have a clear idea of what you, what was said, and you wanna include it in the minutes, then, then why not do it now instead of sending it back?
From my perspective, it's a month old.
So, it's unclear?
So, well, I mean, I understand the concept of, I remember, I recall the concept of the conversation, but was it, is that gonna accurately reflect, you know, will the minutes accurately reflect what went on?
Because it's, it's not there.
Did we make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Did we make a motion on that, or was that just?
No, it was just discussion. There was no motion made.
All right. Your motion to have the minutes updated to that discussion, or Bob brought forth?
Okay. You have a second? Okay. Marty's made the motion. Jamie has seconded. You did second, right? All those in favor of having Ann update these minutes to reflect that discussion?
I'm abstaining.
And I wasn't here. I am abstaining. So, motion carries for?
Yeah, so two abstentions.
Two abstentions, two abstentions and four in favor.
Well, so, my colleague.
Okay.
Have that being updated also, as part of the discussion are noted.
That the seasonal cottages should consider donating some.
I would say within discussion to the town planner, town manager, it doesn't reflect any of that even being discussed.
That is addressed in the minutes of the, of October ninth?
No, it was, it was, it was in, it's on this.
You're right, you're right, 'cause it says that you guys discussed it, and the planner sent out a letter relating to the discussion, so yes. So, while we're at it, we'll get, see if we can get Ann to update that discussion as well.
Please.
Is that a motion, Marty?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, and two abstentions. So, motion passes for in favor, two abstentions, that we'll get.
So, we cannot accept these minutes at, at this time?
No, we can't. We have to wait until they get corrected. So, we will table those until further notice, and we'll move on to the minutes of October ninth.
And the motion to approve is written?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve as written. Any, any discussions, anything that anybody noticed? Well, all those in favor? Okay, again, four in favor, two abstentions.
And the abstentions are?
The abstentions are Roger and myself. We weren't at, at either one of those meetings. Okay, public comment. Does anybody in, from the public have anything they would like to say that is a non-agenda item? Moving on, new applications. You have before you a packet with, uh, Mark Welch and Stone Ridge gravel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it actually a new application, or is it renewed?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is, it is a renewal of the gravel pit conditional use application. The proposal to renew the existing mineral extraction permit for ten-point-five acre gravel pit located on the south side of Curtis Road on a property identified as tax cap twenty-three lot four in the Arkwood District. Stone Ridge Farms Inc. are the owners, and M. Welch and Sons are the applicants and the agents. And in your packet, you, we have a letter from Mr. Welch requesting two waivers. A waiver for a survey of the completed parcel, indicating that that waiver has been granted in the past, and a waiver for the Tobo on the condos, because they're still working on the grading plan that was approved on November eleventh.
And the motion to grant those waivers?
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to grant the two waivers. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Welch. How much progress has been made here since the last?
Most of the grading on all of that has been done. All of this, all the way around to, just above this one, all we gotta do is just finish up this little piece right here.
So, you're according to plan of all of this?
Well, not in here, 'cause this is high on the farm. We just stacked it. As you guys saw last time you were up there, we had a hole here. Last year, we stacked it from this end. So, all these grades on the high side are all done. We've just got this little log here to adjust this grade right on this end right here. This grade will be that end of the farm's done, 'cause this is all that floor renovation right now. So, ninety percent of everything you're working that on here is done, except these grades that are below one, so it's, they'll be, all of this gets done as we build them all and down again. But all of the slope into the farm, most of it's all done and vegetated, so.
And it's all been done according to this plan that we have in front of us?
Yep. That's why I asked for a waiver, because nothing's changed at all that is in this country. We've worked on a new plan. Nothing's changed.
How much water does it have? And the rain fall?
Oh, it doesn't.
Only today?
No.
That's a huge, huge aquifer.
But I just figured, well, my, the flow that we've had.
The only thing that adjusts the water level in there is when KKW fires that pump off on the other side of the river. They can suck that thing right down six or eight feet probably in a month and a half, but they're drawing serious model water. They haven't fired it off yet this year. They ran it late last fall. Now they've got their pump station, everything built over there. They're supposed to be going online, but here, I think next week, they're supposed to fire it off again. But that aquifer goes clear under the Kennymont River and right over on the Coles property, you know, but that's how big it is. So, that's the only time you see any variation. The summer it drops. It might get out a foot. As dry as it was about summer long, but it stays, it stays right there all the time.
I was just being smart when I said.
No, I know you were, but I just, I just, you know, it's incredible how, how much water is there, and it doesn't fluctuate much at all.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to, and it's been seconded to, to grant the two waivers. Any other discussion?
You're doing the same work that was authorized to begin with. You're not requesting additional work or?
Not expanding any, doing anything different. We're actually, this is a finished stage of the thing, right?
And, yeah, right now, you're, you're, to go down nineteen feet, but you're fourteen or fifteen at this point?
Yeah, there's actually, actually, you were, where I took the grade rod and take measures one out of the boat, because I thought we were probably eighteen feet, but the deepest I found on either side was fourteen.
So, you're still, you still have four or five feet to go.
Oh, if you look at the grades that were approved on that plan, I think it's fifty feet, isn't it? So, what was the deepest elevation?
Well, when I'm looking at, what was there originally was ninety-two, right? That's what I'm showing is ninety-two, and the finished elevation is seventy-three.
Seventy-three in the bottom? I can remember what I was worried about. I know what not, what not reaching it.
So, twenty, what is it? So, you got twenty-one?
Yeah.
So, you got like six or seven feet.
Right, but you can't get it with an excavator. If you put a dragline in there like Brex did on that other side back years ago, you could get some depth, but that's the only way you're gonna get more depth than that. And I mean, if we're digging with a seventy-dollar pound excavator, people will tell you they can get twelve, fifteen feet per rubatai back over. That's if you're digging in gravel, straight down onto it, but doing this kind of work, you can't. You're high press to get sixteen, seventeen feet.
You'll be swimming afterward. You'll be swimming.
Well, every time that bucket goes in the water, it makes wave action, and it undermines underneath, or if you try to dig onto it, then you're gonna be in the bottom of the farm, so it's just.
Can I ask, I'll ask about one more question. Have you been out to the site?
I've been in the site.
No, we need, we need to schedule a site walk.
So, I.
I reserved it to, 'cause I figured you folks would wanna go out there.
Yeah, I don't know that, that we ought to grant the waivers before we have a site walk, right? If there's, if there are no changes according to this plan, and if everything is as stated, then I see no problem in granting the waivers, but I think it's appropriate for us to take that site walk before we grant those waivers. Apparently, nobody's been out there, and Ted hasn't been out there.
It's been three years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it was three years ago.
Three years ago.
Time and blood.
Yep.
We did.
Well, it's a lot different than what's three years ago. I mean, we have a lot of site walks out there.
Yeah, there's been a lot of grading.
Sure.
I mean, in lieu of a site walk, I personally would be available to having the planner verify that things are according to plan. That would save the board from having to be in a site walk, but somebody's gotta put some eyes on it to verify it.
Well, I think, I think we should have the site walk. It's been our policy in the past to have the site walks, and I don't think we should change that particular issue.
Yeah, I'm just trying to save a little time.
Yeah, understandable. So, I would ask whether or not.
Well, we have a motion that we have to.
Well, we can ask, we can either vote to defeat the motion, ask the people who made the motion to withdraw, or we can vote in the affirmative and grant the waivers.
And or amend it.
Well, no, 'cause amending it is, we, we, amending it would just create too much of a problem, because the, the motion is to accept them. So, we can't say we're gonna accept them, but we're gonna amend them to accept them later. So, I don't think we could actually have that kind of a motion.
Can you accept the contingent upon the findings of the site walk, and you're from it?
By the other side.
Well, that.
Uh, how, you're the chairman. Where do you wanna go? I don't care.
But if we did.
Just along for the ride, Bob.
If we did it here, where that would speed things up a little bit. We could do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, that would require an amendment to the motion.
Yes. Which would require withdrawal of the second amendment and.
No, wouldn't require a withdrawal of the second. Withdraw the second, the motion goes away. If you vote to amend the motion, we would have to vote on the amendment and then on the amended motion.
Okay.
I make the motion tender that we amend the motion as per.
You have the original motion. You would have to withdraw your motion.
Okay, so, is somebody else, or John can do it?
Yeah, John can do it. John came up with.
It was Bob's amendment.
Spend more time on that.
Go run Bob.
On motion.
Well, I, I, that's why I said, well, just do it. I, I make the motion that we simply add to the standing motion that approved those contingent on positive findings of the board at a site walk.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll second that.
The, the motion has been amended and seconded. All those in favor of the amendments? Okay, so that carries. All those, all those in favor of, of the motion to grant the waivers contingent upon the site walk. Right, and that is also unanimous. Now, we can move on. But we will keep Robert happy.
Well, I'm happy.
Oh, no, not you. The guy, Robert's was the one.
That, Robert.
Okay, then we need a motion to have a site walk.
Or?
Next meeting?
Do we have that based?
Schedule it.
Yeah.
The application's complete, essentially, from the submission requirements, so.
Then let's, let's schedule the site walk for the next meeting before the, which is November thirteenth?
Right.
Oh, okay.
We'll be off daylight savings time then.
Oh, we will, so it'll be dark.
Or is it the fifteenth?
No, it's.
It's getting darker.
Yeah.
It's gonna be bad day.
Yeah, it's gonna be, holy crap.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be before, yeah, we're gonna say pretty close to six o'clock and stack it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the only other option would be to do it on a Saturday.
Well, we can't, well, we had it do last night, three years ago.
I think three years ago, we were on the, just about dark.
Yeah, it was on a Saturday.
It was on a Saturday.
I remember getting washed.
Lost.
Went down the other road, not middle of nowhere.
Well, you wanna do it on a Saturday then?
Or we could sort of have the town planner verify it.
Well, no, we just decide.
You can have a site walk.
We do it, so, 'cause that was.
That would be the second? Is that right?
Or you could do it, you could do it this, next weekend?
We could do it either the twenty, or the first.
We got Sappy coming right up here. What, he has tomorrow?
Yep.
Yeah, but I gotta know that, I gotta post it for three days. That's my dog.
About the site walk?
Yeah, it's a legal meeting. You gotta post the site walk.
So, let's do it on November first.
November first, I'll post it. I know it's the first day, I'm excited, but you've been on for a while.
What time?
It's good for everybody.
It's really out of line.
You want it first thing in the morning, or do it after lunch?
He can go up there. He can go up there. The chairman's not there.
You'll hold down first. I'll say it comes up.
You don't know what's, is that the, the agenda yet?
I think it's there last week. I think it's part of it. But I'll do my best. Wherever time.
What do you guys feel like?
Ten o'clock?
I would prefer earlier, the better.
Yeah, me too. Four AM.
Hey, you got it.
It's still dark then, so we might as well do it, oh, at six-thirty in the evening.
He just wants to get sun thrown.
Ten?
Yeah, I think.
Eight o'clock? Saturday.
I'm game for whatever time. You guys are boss.
I give it ten. I give it nine.
So, compromise and say nine, Mr.?
Set compromise and say nine.
Nice, make it brilliant.
Very good morning time.
Nine o'clock, November first. Okay.
It might, you bring the coffee.
Actually, you shouldn't have it, 'cause it's dangerous to go.
So, I have to.
It's not in the woods.
You gotta get it from a, um, um.
I'll post this in the.
Markham basket.
I'll have Harris find the letter there.
Okay, Saturday.
That's an incentive right there, copying this document. Okay, if, if, yeah, copy and notice.
You can do that.
Yeah, gotta work.
I gotta know how many's coming.
Plan, plan on a lot, and we'll just take.
Well, let's put it this way. What's not eaten, you always can take home, and you know it will be eaten.
I might have my own.
This is, this parcel's off the Curtis Road?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we said nine o'clock, right?
Nine o'clock.
All right. Probably won't have a test, huh? This is the easiest way to go from.
Got a golf course, probably have golf.
You can come in on that way.
You don't wanna come in the downing road.
That's what I was wondering.
Well, you're not coming.
Down the road's closed.
Nothing goes at all?
Downing End Road to Curtis.
It's open partway in, right?
You can't come through.
You might not be able to all the way through. That's what I was wondering, which side to go off.
I don't think.
You go in, go in the lot, uh, for.
I'm just saying, I don't think you can, 'cause I thought there was a gate there. On the downing road end.
There is.
So, you can't come through that?
Yeah, it's not, it's not that far down. I, the guy that owns the Lama Farm, I think it's right at the end of his property.
Down there?
Yeah, he's gated it off. Okay, let's take a look at the Gateway District, okay? We have a bunch of decisions that.
I like jelly.
Okay.
Okay, or coconut. Is that? I think that's legal.
That's the only way down.
Whatever, I see anymore.
You do.
That's a good remark.
Take it. You coming too?
Nope.
He's going nothing. He's only gonna take it.
Yeah.
You go right up there? You're right up there all the time.
I'm not allowed to go to Saturday's site walk.
Thank you, guys.
My boss doesn't want me to.
Okay. The planner has been kind enough to give us a bunch of different stuff, a decision flow chart, recommendations for, um, permitted uses, conditional uses, uh, a table indicating the existing building and lot sizes in the area.
Also, I have the town, may I ask a question to the planner?
Absolutely.
Okay, have we, uh, had any, um, um, communication about town sign being moved on? And secondary, has any thoughts or opposed thoughts of cost of, of the sewer or anything else?
Well, that's gonna be a long.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's bringing it up, so it's.
It was brought to the selectmen's attention that had to follow Monday, and it's actually Tuesday, 'cause it was after the holiday. So, it was, um, it was brought, brought up to their attention with the sign, and also to deal with speed limit, and also to start talking to Bitterford about extension of sewer at least to the bridge.
Well.
So, that was discussed at the selectmen's meeting. Um, I believe they're going to move the sign, and I believe that, um, Todd already knows, as, Todd's already going to ask DVP, and that DVP, M.DOT, to lower the speed limit. Um, he's not very, um, optimistic about those chances, because D, uh, M.DOT is rather, uh.
Rejection.
Dictatorial about this, and they don't really care about existing conditions. They just wanna move traffic. It's, it's really usually not a, unless we have an LOS failure, unless we have a very high accident or, um, fatality, uh, in series of fatalities at an intersection, I think, seeing that too.
Question, I have that idea also too, because, uh, coming out of Bitterford right there, the speed limit is?
Forty.
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 Okay, and as soon as it comes onto that, that side of the bridge, for the bridge, it, it jumps to fifty.
Who's that?
Can't they just simply, no, no, I'm just saying it's change the sign, so I actually, so you're after the bridge, because.
The logic makes sense, Marty, and, and it will be proposed to DOT, but it's strictly DOT's decision.
You don't need ten more miles an hour to get up over the bridge.
And, sure, if we could organize some, uh, citizen petition, and a business community petition to lower that speed limit in that area, that certainly would, wouldn't hurt. But, um, I think, uh, the logic for the, the change will be presented to M.D.O.T., but it's just that they have a tendency of not changing speed limits very, very readily is the, is the truth. Now, that's not to dissuade us from doing it. I think the town wants to do it. It should make a, make as much of a stink as possible about it, 'cause I think our, our residents there, our business people, have already told us that it's a real problem. It's, it's a danger. Um, and, uh, really, I, I would agree with all your logic and more about why it should be moved, um, but I think an outcry from the citizens would really do a lot more, uh, at this point, to pressure DOT, because DOT is not, as I said.
They do what they want.
It's their road. It's, that one is really their road, but they can tell us what to, what to, uh, post our, our speed limits on our local roads. Um, they have dictatorial authority over that. You can, if we were to post a road twenty-five miles an hour, and they say it's thirty-five, and it's not their road, then you don't get, we, we get no revenue sharing for it. Um, actually, anybody who is, um, it would be difficult to enforce it, um, speeding laws in a court of law.
If they put it at twenty-five, and they said thirty-five, we wouldn't be handing out speeding tickets, because people would be going thirty-five, ten over the posted limit.
Right. But, uh, the good thing is that. But, uh, the good thing is that the selectmen, uh, the chairman was here and he brought it up at the, uh, the agenda at the Tuesday following meeting and all those items were before the, the end. Board of Selectmen for their consideration. And I will give you an update on anything that I, uh, of the progress of those, those, any, those discussions. We've had discussions with Kenabunkas, as we all know, but we haven't really initiated discussions yet. The Bitterford move on that. Selectmen are in favor of initiating those discussions.
So where should we start with this?
Well, we've got, probably gonna start with the, uh, the flow chart there, with the, uh, decision tree. The first thing that we really need to, to do what? Get this up here. The first issue was really to finalize the district boundaries. There were, the, uh, complane committee informed everybody, uh, at the meeting that although the founders were showing the map, um, they were, never really described and they could be loosened, mended and changed. And we were waiting to see if there was any, any, uh, feedback from any of the attending residents at the workshop, or business folks, as to whether the families made sense, whether they objected, whether they wanted to be in the district, they didn't want to be in the district. We, we actually got no feedback from anybody that they didn't want to be in the district and it was on that. This is the district as we have proposed it thus far.
There, there were, there was nobody that is outside the district in the placid that wanted to give in?
We heard nothing.
Okay.
We heard nothing. Uh, as you well know, while you weren't here, uh, it was lightly attended, I believe there were four property owners who attended. Out of a possible twenty-four property owners. So it was, uh, it was a light showing. But I have not gotten any feedback from anybody, including some residents, that they didn't want to be in the district, so. Um, the district, um, and I did this, this time on the assessor's map, so we can, if you want to, you can corroborate that with, with the, uh, the assessor's map and the records that come up on, on individual lots and who the owners are and where, you know, and the size of the properties and what they have for existing buildings out there. Uh, but essentially, um, it goes from the Bitterford line, follows the Boston and, uh, Main Railroad line, uh, on the west side. It follows, um, the boundary line of, this is essentially, this property right here, which is leaning enough, belongs to the museum, the trial museum. Um, and it, uh, it's a very large parcel, that parcel right there is about ten acres. And it has, it's fairly good land, as you can see, the, the weapons are delineated on this end, it's, a lot of it is fairly good land. And it does have access, now whether or not that's, that's adequate access there or not, I don't, I can't really say at this point, but it's, it's the largest, um, parcel of land in this district that's not developed at this particular time. And we included that because it frankly speaking was, um, it's part of the BI district and, um, it, uh, including it in this would give it more potential to have a few more, uh, different uses than it had realistically in the BI, given its position, given its size, given its orientation, probably some residential and some mixed use would probably do very well here. And you remember right now BI doesn't allow residential at all, so it gives that property a little bit more flexibility. I didn't include it on this map, but the, the BI district basically comes through like this, down. Biceps this property right here, down. And so there's a sliver of the BI district still in there, and the reason why we kept the sliver in there was because there is, right now, one business that is a BI, there's a sawmill right here, for instance. And, uh, the objective was to, um, was not to change those businesses at all. And plus, I think the board wanted to keep, keep the, uh, the district pretty much focused on, on Portland Road and just a section of old Post Road near Portland, instead of bringing it down to Proctor Road, which regardless of the zoning is, because of its topography, because of the wetland constraints and because of the railroad track, it's really an isolated area, it's not really much of a business, so it will not have a lot of potential for business. But there are existing businesses in there and, so we had that sliver. Now, we may wanna reexamine that in the future, uh, when we look at BI or we look at R three. Right now, this is an R three district, most of this is an R three district and that is, uh, that's a two acre zoning district, um, with some additional rural uses that are permitted in it. And, uh, right now, the complane is considering whether or not to eliminate the R three district. Because of its, uh, limited potential. The other thing about it though is this is one of our two locations in town that's a designated mobile home park, three, three locations. That's, uh, in the designated mobile and mobiley district.
But isn't that part of the down Proctor Road?
Yep. Yeah, it's not here, it's right about in here, down.
But also too, when you were just saying that this trial museum has that property up there and has access, where does it actually show access to Route One?
The only place that we've seen is here, and I think this is part of the, this might be part, part, the approach to the overpass. Um, it actually, uh, it's part of Proctor Road, this is actually Proctor Road right here, doesn't have direct access to Route One. But, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't, this map doesn't delineate Proctor Road in here, this is Proctor Road. So its access to Route One is via Proctor Road, but it's very close up in the near section.
But is it, is that property there of buying, uh, Mike Packard, which we, uh?
Yeah, this Mike Packard's land right here, both of these are Packard's land.
Okay, that's. Okay, now that's what I'm just trying to get, because I know just right off the curve there, there's some barricades there.
Yeah.
Is that the access where you might be speaking of, which had to get into that property?
It might be.
I mean, I'm just.
It also could be combined with a Palatier property. There's any number of different options that might be available out there.
Okay, so for, before us, this is what we had, this is what was proposed, nobody recommended any changes.
Nobody's recommended any changes.
So we're good to go for.
Unless the board, unless the board sees any, any deficiencies or additions that you would like that.
I've just got one question, which I brought up at the very beginning, that concerns parcel two, have you heard anything from Ray Doggville as far as being chomped and, chomped a piece off of?
No, I, I've made sure I sent him a letter and I've got anything back.
Yeah, cause I, it could go either way, he might be in favor, he might not be, and if he's been notified, I guess that's okay.
Yeah, and he even had the map sent to him, I sent him the map so he knew what it was and knew where it's provided. So he knows where this property is, I said, your property has been affected by this. But, you know, the, the problem to do it is, is I can't say what the district contains yet, because we're still, we're still working on it. But, you know, it does, I did include a description of what the complane committee did say, so, um, that's the only, that's the only difference. And the other thing that we did change, excuse me, the other thing I did, did change from the other map, there was another lot. There was this section in here, which really isn't accessible because of the, um, the gradient of the, uh, the overpass bridge. When you go out there, you see that, that's not like accessible.
Didn't you also change a line on Lot twenty-five there, didn't you originally have a chopping that Lot twenty-five? Yeah.
Well, that, uh, no, that, that line that you saw, twenty-five was, um, that was a, that was part of the BI district.
Yeah, didn't we originally have a line going, going through that?
Well, let's pull it up.
Somewhere down there?
Let's, let's pull it up.
Thought we did.
That's the BI district that goes through twenty-five.
Oh, okay, the BI district was chopping that.
That, yeah, this is, yeah. This is Kenny King's lot, for instance, and then this is, um.
Right, that's what I was remembering.
Yeah, that's what you're remembering.
Okay, so the only lot that gets divided by this district is the Doggville lot.
Right. It's the only one. Otherwise, the only reason is because it, yeah, obviously, it's a huge lot, it's a hundred and forty-eight acres, huge lot. The only lot that also has access to the Boston Main Railroad, um, in the event that you wanted to put, put a siding in, is actually, it's doable, although it, it's very heavily, it's, it's lousy soils down there, but there is siding potential down there. It's one of the few places we have in the, uh, in the business district where you can do that. To put in a siding. Down in here, we don't really have. Doesn't really work.
No room.
There's no real room for the siding. Here we have room to put a siding, siding's usually fifteen hundred feet or two thousand. They can be lapsed or frayed, you know, if you.
But also, also too, in between there, is there, under the bridge, I don't think there is actually a crossing, is there? So that you could get on the other side of the tracks.
Nope.
There's no crossing. There's not a, a legal crossing there?
That's where I'm going at.
There is a.
Crossing, which rail?
But it's not a legitimate crossing?
I, I see nothing on any of the maps or in the D C, in case there is a surface right of way. And, um, Pan Am is very, very, uh, aggressive about closing all, and, and, and closing and negotiating closing of all surface crossings where it's possible. For obvious reasons, considering there's huge liability and they think they're trying to reduce that as much as possible. They've maybe even approached people here in town about eliminating their crossings.
So how does the, how does the board feel about those boundary lines? Are you happy with them? Do you think they need to be changed?
I should stick with the.
Yeah, okay.
Gotta bring it up, board.
If the residents are, or the, the owners are all happy, I mean, uh.
Well, they're not burning down the town hall. So I, I, as this progresses, we might hear something, and as, as this board knows, usually the initial response is something, but we might encounter this again in the future. So far, as we've heard, residents are, you know, okay with it.
Uh, can you find out where Lot one zero zero five is, I don't. Direct lack. It's supposed to be an apartment office.
Okay. One, five should be east two. What's the address?
Uh. Two, five, eight, one, oh, H and R, okay, never mind, I know where it is.
Oh, sorry.
That's cross street from.
It's right here, this is H and R right here.
I know exactly, it's cross street from the connection.
So this is the connection right here.
Yeah. I just, I do want to break it on that one for a minute.
Okay. So moving on with our decision flow chart, assuming that the board, do you need a motion on that, Mr. Chairman? Decision one?
We should probably have one.
I move that we go with the boundaries as indicated, um, how can we reference that map?
Um, the Gateway District map.
And how many of them are there, that's as of dated, as of today?
As of today, yes. Sorry. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to accept the delineation on the gateway map dated October twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. All those in favor?
Well, we have, we have a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Unanimous.
Motion is unanimous. Under the maximum building size.
Maximum building size, okay. For this, you might wanna refer to your, um, your table as well. Now, the, the issue of maximum building size is something that, that we, uh, seem to get into in smaller little districts, these mixed-use districts. Because of the, the issue of trying to make commercial development fit within a context of a large number of residences that are in existing business districts or, you know, destiny of existing business districts. And as this board, over again, uh, I think it was a pretty, pretty, uh, repetitious theme throughout the entire workshop, two weeks ago was that things have gotta be in scale. Scale with existing buildings, scaling, scale and design to the existing, uh, conditions in the neighborhood so that the neighborhood, so it fit, it's a name, you kept hearing that term, fit in the name, scale. And so the issue is really, um, one of how big a buildings do we, we have? In the townhouse corner district, remember we, we got down to five thousand square feet on, on, uh, the maximum size of new buildings that we'll be putting in there.
That was for the footprint, right?
That's for the footprint.
It could go ten, fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it could go higher. The, uh, the issue here again, using the same technique, took an inventory of all the properties within the designated district. Examine their lot sizes and their building sizes, so we had a relative idea of, of the, of the scale of the, the properties we're talking about. And, um, and the uses, and you can see there's, there's, there's a good mix of, of residential and non-residential. And, uh, in many, many cases, they're, they're sharing the same property. In the end, what it boils down to, our average building footprint was about eighteen hundred and twenty-seven. The largest footprint that we had for commercial, the largest, uh, residential, uh, was, uh, where is it? Largest residential was about thirty-eight hundred square foot, I said footprint. And that was, uh, uh, that was the residence on Old Post Road and, uh, that was a trial area, I'm just gonna be honest. And then the, uh, the other one was the largest commercial building, but they're not, it's the nothing new antique store. Um, both in terms of its, uh, footprint and in terms of its total square footage, so that's the biggest building in that, in that district. Just egging out the footprint of the, uh, the Chan, New Champagne building. So there's small, small structures down there, you don't start getting anything big until you get down to County Otto and over to Champagne, you know, on Old Post Road. So, uh, it's a small district with small buildings and also small lots. The average lot size was, uh, two acres. And that's average. With, with the ten acre lot from the, uh, from the museum, I'm skewing the data. So I broke it down a little bit more and found that the, the number of lots that were under an acre was almost, was third, twenty-nine percent of the total number of lots. Lots that were one to, uh, just under two acres were, uh, another twenty-nine percent, so less, a little less than a third for lots that are under two acres. So we're talking a, a majority of the lots in this neighborhood right now are under two acres. And then we have ten percent that are between two and three acres and then three up is another ten percent or two. We're talking a small number of units here. And then we had that one large, large lot, the developed lot, the Bolson Museum, so, um, we have small properties in this district. The potential to build large buildings in this district is very limited by A lots and B, the size of existing buildings. That's just the reality. And if you recall, what we were originally proposing was to, uh, to make the minimum lot size in the district, or any new lots to be wanting here, with short fudge, with a hundred foot fudge. Which gives some people too, uh, an opportunity to put in more units, if you will. Uh, but that's, that's pretty much the breakdown of what we've got for existing conditions, I mean, that's small lots and small buildings, um, general. So twenty thousand square foot lots, twenty thousand square foot buildings are gonna be, uh, few and far between out there, it's not gonna be the norm. And that's where we run into a bit of a dilemma, because, um, you know, when we, we were playing with different kinds of footprints the last time, and you'll remember that the complane talks about small to medium scale. They didn't specify what it was, but they said small to medium, and we know that medium is, is a, um, a scale that could be up to twenty thousand, because that's the scale that's used in the, um, scale that's used in the DB one district. But medium could, could be less than that. And it's, it's up to, it's up to this board to, to define medium for the given, for the given conditions of each one of these districts. I don't think we have to be married that that's automatically a medium. So.
Does it make it simple?
Well, it may make it simple, but it doesn't always apply in every situation. One, one size does not necessarily fit all.
Well.
I'm a, I'm a large, I'm an extra large, but that doesn't mean that I.
And if you have a one acre, you're not going to build a twenty thousand square foot. So you'd build, so you would build something smaller. I mean, you don't, you don't write all of these exceptions to fit all of the different kinds of sized lots that happen to be there. I agree that we should probably come down on the upper size to make it to scale of the neighborhood, but I shouldn't be in favor of, you know, give a juggling. Yeah, that's great.
Well, I wasn't talking about juggling, I was just saying that, you know, medium isn't always twenty thousand. That's what I'm saying. Medium's twenty thousand in the, in the DB one district. And we'll probably find medium might be even bigger when we do the A R T district than the one eleven. It's a relative scale, so.
Well, the other thing is even if you went down to a one acre lot, which would affect on the very end of, of, uh, town line, which possibly wouldn't have missed the mills, okay? You still got to try to put a roadway in, and try to, because there's the overall existence to try to subdivide that all, and with the existing conditions of what's presently there, you would need sewer. You're limiting everything else along the way. First of all, business. You do have water, and that's the only good thing. And you do have tree bays, at least.
Considering the scale of what's in that district, I think twenty thousand is excessive.
Yeah.
But I, I'm comfortable, although it would be an unusual size, I'm comfortable with ten thousand as a top, as opposed to twenty.
That's what, that's the number I had quoted.
Yeah, I mean, ten thousand, it'll be big for that district, but in some lots it might fit.
I was, I was looking at it going, we told Townhouse Corner District five thousand square feet, that's the size of the building. And I think that those lots, some of those lots are much bigger than what we have down here, so I think five thousand down here, I think five thousand is a lot of building space, if we're talking about.
Multi-story, are we talking about footprint or talking about square footage?
We're talking about footprint. And I think a five thousand square foot footprint is more than enough.
We stay through here, ten thousand.
Yeah, you could go up, and you could end up with ten. But I, I think having a ten thousand square foot footprint, that's a big footprint to have on a piece of property.
Yeah, but something like that museum lot could sustain it.
It could, but that museum lot is the exception to the rule.
Right.
And I, I'm not sure.
My crystal ball ain't showing.
But you could put in two buildings, two of that lot, speaking of.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it is what I mean, yeah.
Yeah. It's the land that governs how they're going to build, whether they're going to build it, they're going to have, if they're going to ride over, if they're going to do a tax.
But, but land boundaries can be altered.
Yeah, I could go in and I could buy all of the property out there, and I could put up some fires.
Well, I agree. There's scenarios that we could sit here and talk about.
I couldn't agree with that much, buddy.
And the, the reason I agreed with John is because of the comp plan's language that references small to medium.
It seems consistent with that language. It wraps it down a little bit because of.
Yeah, we cut it down some from the DB one.
Surroundings, right?
Right.
And just, just for, just a little dose of reality, if you're talking about a total, if you're talking about a property or a building that you're going to have accessible to the public, most likely unless you're going to go on multi-storied, you're not going to have that set of four, because you have to put in an elevator to meet eighty-eight apartments, and that's sixty grand right there, just for the other. So, just, just a little dose there. So, that doesn't mean you can't put residential in the set.
But ten thousand is, not triple, but almost three times the size of anything down there. And we did hear, and we did hear that they wanted things kind of to where they are, right? I, I think there's one or two properties there that can sustain something that, like, I don't think any of the other ones can, and they're further back, so I, I was more at the five thousand, but the ten thousand doesn't scare them off either, you know?
And a ten thousand is the, is the, is the prototypical size for a low ready? Just if that's a.
Yeah. And that's what I say, I think that would.
I mean, I think, I think some, I don't know if the lady would look to go right there per se, but something of that, that size and scale, I think coming into town wouldn't be horribly large.
That's, you know, that's also a small dollar store town.
Right. I think it was, yeah.
It'd be fifteen thousand.
But, yeah, the reason why it doesn't look bigger is because of the peaks and groves, basically, sealed that in the back garage here pretty well. And that's what it's going to boil down to, and that's the one thing we really heard from the residents was design. You know, make it, make it fit. And so, yeah, can you make a writing fit into a neighborhood like that? Sure. And make, can you make a VIP fit? Probably need a little bit more breakout about it than what we've got to make it fit that neighborhood, but we can do it. There's a lot of tricks, and it doesn't take you a lot of money to do it. A lot of tricks you can do to break it out.
Did I make a motion, or did I?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we set the upper limit at ten thousand.
I'll second that.
And we're talking about the footprint?
Footprint, right.
Now, where does that specify?
That'll be in the table of claim.
Okay, so you'll have to add.
I will add, that will be added to the table of claim uses. I'm not, if you remember originally the schedule of claim uses, I included in that, that was actually a discretionary point of view. Um, but in the table of claim uses. So you're saying the footprint's going to be ten thousand, John?
Right. Should we still second that?
I would, I would draw my second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Now, now why, just a question, if I can use that.
Absolutely, because the motion's been made and seconded, so we can discuss that.
Why does it have to be the footprint?
Meaning?
Just because we've used that in other districts, why do we, are we, are we bound to use it in this district?
Not bound to use it.
No, we could use, we could use it differently.
That's essentially what I'm asking the question.
Now, if you want to do it, say there's, there's no limit on that, but you basically have to, um, that you have to meet the design criteria of making this thing break up so it fits into, visually fits in the district, you could do that and have no limitation on that. There's no reason why you don't. I think we did it in certain situations to make sure that it used didn't overpower the area. For instance, a, one of our, one of the things that still remains very controversial is a low-impact manufacturing. Um, and that makes people very, very nervous, so that's why we capped the size of that. We have low-impact, and then we have medium-impact. So we, and that was capped by size and by use. We specified the uses, but we specified everything's enclosed, and it has to, it can't be over five thousand or six thousand within the district.
We also had a lot supplement, where we were writing and trying to take into account, we go delineate, delineate, figure that, and then, well, what happens if there's a second? Well, then what happens if there's a third? And then we went back and rewrote. So the footprint was one that is site verifiable on the plan, everybody knows, understands, there's no, no, no interpassion really needed to that one.
But, but I understand what you're saying, Jena, if you, if you're, if you're a good designer, and you can break it up, you can wear anything, let's say in that tiddly girl, and make it look like it fits in with the neighborhood by breaking up the facade mass. I think, you know, one of the, one of, a good example of that, quite frankly, of course, this is a very expensive one, is, is what they did in, in Bar Harbor downtown, in the hotels. They broke that up, and that's a huge massive facade, and they broke it up in two little sections, and they, they painted each one differently. So it looks like you've got this row of small buildings, and it's one building. So they could do that, that's how they got away with doing that. And, and I think Diane mentioned at the last meeting about what Kennebunk worked, Kennebunk, sorry, from the other side of the bridge, Lower Village. Uh, Kennebunk did with that, with that arcade of small indoor spaces, that's broken up too. That's not a small length of space, and they broke that up the same way, so. You know, it all depends how, how hard you guys want to work on that issue of law.
No, I like the, I like the idea of, of building footprint. I really do, I mean, I think it, it makes things, from a, from a designer's standpoint, they know exactly what you're going off of. Somebody can come in, if they care to, with a little bit of a, of a spec building, I know people don't like those words, but you could come in with a building footprint, and we could review it without getting into the nuts and bolts of campel rooms and, and a lot of the, the other stuff that convolutes it.
It's just like how they did it throughout in Carver, where we have fellas, that has, it's all broken up.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded for a ten thousand square foot footprint. Maximum footprint, ten thousand square.
So if you did two floors without.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you're right. I'm telling you straight up front, I'm not in favor. All in favor of ten thousand, okay? All those are close. Okay, motion passes four to two. I think ten, I just think ten thousand is too big, because the, because the people in the neighborhood have said they want it small. So I think ten thousand is too big.
And now, when you're two, two floors, you get twenty thousand.
So, I think, we'll see what happens when we run, run aside the meeting, and if they like it, great, if not, we can chop it down.
Well, that's half, that's half of our other standing mediums.
Okay, so we now have the building size of a maximum ten thousand square foot footprint. Schedule of uses, where it gets interesting. Now, that being said, we could, we could beat this to death forever and a day, personally, we should just take what we've said in Townhouse Corner District and say, okay, because that's pretty much everything that they've said, based on my readings of the minutes. They've said, yeah, the stuff that's down here in Townhouse Corner District, that's all of the stuff that they would like to see up in this area.
And Ted, did you adjust the list based on the conversations?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
See the new ones, or the underlines?
Why, uh, why does, was the additional prohibited uses put in?
Because they put prohibited uses. And, and that's something, and the prohibited uses, and I know it's an omitted uses, but there's, there's several things that can be classified as a certain type of use, that could be bowled over into.
Sort to eliminate the gray area?
It's to eliminate the gray area. And these folks, as you recall, were very adamant about a couple.
Yeah.
They were adamant about taverns or anything involving alcohol sales directly. I mean, you're, you're going to have it with a restaurant, but if it's, the focus was alcohol, they were dead set against it. Um, they were dead set against any large adult business, they were dead set against, if you recall. And that's retail, that can be retail, that can be service.
We're going to have to add adult provisions to the definition, right?
Well, we have one, yes, we do have the definition. I didn't, I don't think I put it in your list.
No, it's not here on this.
Oh, sorry, I'll, I'll put it in your list. Automobile and service stations and auto repair, they were very adamant about that. And I was going to put in convenience stores, because remember, they kept saying that, but really, an automotive service station, our definition of it is such that it's, that's a convenience store as we know it. Gas pumps, or diesel pumps, K-one pumps, whatever, and food. Um, they were, that's, we lumped those together, we don't call anything a convenience store, we changed automobile service station to meet what the current standard, or the current, current model is. But they said absolutely not, and no more auto repair, and those were the things they, they said they didn't want.
Because you could have a small local store that's under retail.
Yeah, you could have pumps.
You put out the gas.
Okay, you can't put the pumps up. They also mentioned mobile homes, remember that one?
No.
Oh, yeah, it's in the minutes too.
Ours are, I mean, we direct word, but.
Well, that's it, that's, that's, you heard the town manager talk about that too, and the issue is, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, from a town's fiscal standpoint, mobile homes are a huge money loss, they're sick. Although, our assessor does not depreciate them. At some point, somebody's going to argue that, she does not depreciate them. The issue for the, the members, for the people here was, we don't have a lot of them in here, let's, let's keep them where they are right now, and let them continue down the road in Proctor Road where there's a mobile home park designation. And in other places where there's mobile home park designation, let's not put mobile homes in this district. There's lots of other places. And that was, that was what they said, and that wasn't bad, and I think the board said, yeah, that works. But it's up to you. You can pull it out of there. Taverns was another one they were adamant against. So that's why I put prohibited uses.
I've got a question on seventeen public utility, are those not taken out because it's permitted regardless, is that what?
Because it's always conditional use anywhere.
Oh, it's always conditional.
Yeah, so I put it all back and give it the conditional.
Can I say anything about campground and stuff like that?
No, no campgrounds.
So that would be an omitted, should be an omitted, right?
That's an omitted, yeah. That is one that, you know, campground's pretty, pretty obvious. Um, and I could have something, same thing with automobile service and auto repair, and we could take that out and put it uses, because those have been very, very distinct. But I'm also worried about somebody who's got a store, and they said, well, I want to put some pumps in. That changes your definition, and that can be a little difficult. So that's why I put in there, as a, you know, we can take it out. It's just sort of like one of those flags that says, if you're a convenience store and you have plans to put in pumps in the future, don't build, don't down the road.
Well, convenience stores is one of the items that they specifically wanted left out.
Yes, and when they were talking about convenience stores, they were talking about, you know.
The gas station convenience.
Gas station, convenience store, which is the key, which is the standard. You know, J. Brooks, that's the standard, that's how everybody does it. Even Irving. So, that's what they were adamant against, and taverns or any kind of drinking. You'll notice I, I kept social facility or clubs in there. Did I have social clubs? Should we just call us, my mistake, reduced it down.
You called it service.
Service club.
Service club, that's wrong.
Clubs. Where we got it.
That was, uh.
Let's see, okay.
Or clean up convenience.
So the clubs, not turking alcohol, they're just, they get, you hit questions marked on some of that, and I would like to get some.
Question.
Right, number, number three, under conditional, with the convention center, fill us a ten thousand, but we said ten thousand, so does that leave that in?
We can leave that in. Our current definition is that a convention center's going to have a minimum of ten thousand square feet. We don't want any little piddly things, we want for gold.
So we could just take that last part off, because we said ten thousand square feet.
So you can put, so I would, I, I actually originally had a slash banquet hall slash convention center, and that was something you folks talked about with the residents, they said, yeah. I was kind of surprised, because that's traffic jam. yeah, I was kind of surprised, because that's traffic generated, it's a huge traffic generated, but, yeah. But it, it has to be conditional use, because it's, so, well, since we're now up to 10,000, uh, you could take. It's up to you when you wanna put it in, I mean, it will be a convention center at the very minimum of 10,000, it's complete one, the razor's edge there. Don't go one foot over.
Yeah, but if you have a two-floor convention center.
You can do a two-floor convention center with it, with your $60,000 adroaling elevator.
But if you got a convention center outside, you could put in an elevator.
Or you could put in two buildings, two 10,000 square foot buildings, connected by a temporary structure loan to, no, you don't tell gym, an awning, a dorm. Don't say temporary structure, gym, those are bizarre. There are no such things.
Okay, what about the daycare? Daycare, nine, the daycare center.
Yeah, daycare, oh, pet daycare.
Pet daycare.
You know, that, we didn't even broach that subject with them, but remember, that's like a camel, that's a lot of bone and dogs and so forth. I'll take that out. I'll take that out. Roger that, it's gone, we'll do it right as we speak.
So this is version three.
Non-residential institutional uses, including educational, religious, philanthropic, fraternal, or social institutions. Would that not also eliminate clubs?
Yeah.
Where are you?
I'm at, I'm at number 11.
You gotta took it out.
Right.
I exclude it.
Right, but my, my point being that by excluding that, do you not automatically exclude clubs?
I put in it.
Yeah, but then.
What's the difference between 11 and 14?
Fraternal organizations that say that can't allow. All or night.
Night. Right, I'm a club. So I'm a fraternal organization, we've said you can't have them in 11.
No, I didn't say you couldn't have them, I took it out. Yeah.
But you added in clubs, so it's.
Is that because you're a club?
It's inclusive?
Is clubs inclusive of all those things? Because we came up with a definition of a fraternal organization as a club.
So, a club would allow a fraternal, education, religious, or philanthropic type of institution?
Let me go to clubs, let me pull it up. Forget me, I'm on my Apple phone, so I'm.
But it gets rid of them all because it says no alcohol.
Right, it's, 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 it's gets rid of everything but the church.
Yeah.
Is that a club? Communion.
So that a club?
Sober most, uh.
Most don't do the, uh.
Sober plus.
Yeah, most of the no use one.
They don't do real wine anymore?
Oh, no, it's scriptures.
Oh.
Pretty sure our church, we don't have.
I know, it's scriptures.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I don't have.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna give out the wine, cause there's, there's people there probably shouldn't be having it.
Other than the priest.
And not the minors.
Yeah, or them.
Is the way of life in the Middle East?
Club, any voluntary association of persons organized primarily for social, religious, benevolent, recreational, literary, scientific, or political purposes whose facilities, especially a clubhouse, are open to members and not the general public.
That must include.
By that definition, because you have church listed just above it, I think you'd have to include church in that.
In what, the definition, or?
No, in, in the, in the zone. We, we're allowing religious clubs.
That's like the knights.
Yeah.
That's a social organization. That's a club, it's a religious, social organization.
Well, I think if, if you're gonna put something like that in there, we should put churches in there, and allow people to have churches.
No. Churches turn out, your churches turn out, they don't produce enough, they like your mobile homes.
It's irrelevant, you should be allowed to have a church. The Supreme Court will tell you that you can have a church in your house.
You're going into that Supreme Court. We're doing a, we're doing a small district down here.
Yeah, but if, if your club is a religious club, they're gonna be tax exempt if, if you don't.
All of the other social clubs are gonna be tax exempt, so it doesn't make any difference.
AFW is tax exempt.
Right, they're all tax exempt.
I don't know about all of them, but a lot of them.
Ninety, 99%?
Political clubs probably not.
Political clubs are tax exempt.
Only depends on which kind.
Yeah, depends on who's in office at the time.
Who they file.
What are you gonna put the KKK in here?
Tax exempt. They're not tax exempt.
Well, you know, that's what.
That keeps all the word for out.
It was church.
I got you, I think church shouldn't be in.
They already have a church.
Yeah, it's a church.
Yeah, there is a church there right now.
Right.
There is an existing church.
So we don't need another one, right?
That's a big question. The big one he has made was we can get, but that's another story. Okay.
So would that go as a, would a church go as a permitted use?
Uh, I would say that it would be conditional, because we're saying clubs are conditional, so we'd make it a conditional use.
Yeah, I would make it conditional.
Now, church would come back in for a renewal?
I don't know if you want a satanic church, but. That's the thing.
Or a mosque.
Or a mosque.
I wouldn't want any of them, but I wouldn't want them to say that I, that I couldn't put a church in there either.
Well, you know, that, it, it is a legitimate question, where do you want your churches in this community? I mean, where do you want your religious houses in this community?
Often there, and you are, I was like, well, I'd be.
I'd get pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you think about it, I don't know, I had a Mormon church going one time, there was a lot of opposition. Cause it was a big facility.
We had a Jehovah's Church.
Yeah, but with a more than 10,000 square feet, so you got your limit there, so things go up.
Mosques go the same way, mosques go up.
Yeah, by the time you get to the middle of it, you'd be up 40,000.
Yeah, but we do have a high limit on buildings too.
Right.
We're all, but.
We are inspiring to the, to the heaven.
So we are in fact keeping with churches?
Yeah.
I think we should be.
Fire pole.
Alright, staying with clubs, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else I need to do?
Your church, you're gonna have your fire pole in the middle of it. Quick exit.
Get that out. So, I would have had churches in your city. Bob the. Do you wanna share that with the rest of us?
No, he does not.
You wanna share that with the, with the other folks at home? Okay.
Nobody's watching the World Series, maybe they've got us on.
I think we're all stuck there.
Well, let me make sure I get this all squared up.
Of course, you always have your dance club.
Yeah, there's all different. And I think that was somewhat of the intent, was to.
Not to let.
Have it be flexible.
And we're still gonna leave the low impact manufacturing not to exceed the 5,000?
That was a question I, you know, remember, we got a lot of flack for that.
I, I don't know, they cut it back up, said depend on design standards, when you read the noise and, you know, the definition of what it is and nothing outside. You know, it's all in close. They said it's all got to do with the design standards. It's all in close, so you got a 10,000 square foot building, you should be able to run out of your low impact too.
Well, your low impact, we've been here, it should not exceed 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's fine, you can have a building otherwise in the zone of 10,000. They probably brought it up, we may wanna change that. Or you make that not exceed 5,000 or leave it.
You know, I mean. That is our current definition for low impact, guys.
Okay.
Now, Ted, also in the definitions, there is listed health club. Yeah, I, I, I wanted to bring that issue up.
Alright, is it?
You know, I think of health, we, we've made a distinction in the past about what a health club is in this town. And a health club, yeah, yeah, we have.
When? I don't remember discussing it at all.
Well, we discussed it in DB1 and 2.
How long ago?
I don't know, four years ago?
Yeah.
How long even that is?
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, we discussed health clubs as being a, I mean, we, we couldn't figure out any, any other category to put in. Personal service, not quite.
It is.
Not like getting a haircut. And we thought that.
Jim is a personal service, so then that needs to go as a health club, since it's held out separately, it ought to be, you know, either permitted use or.
Well, that's why I put, that's why I threw it in the definitions and say, gentlemen, is, I mean, we have medical facilities, which they said they would like. They, we didn't have health facilities, and health facilities or labs and, you know, more industrial stuff, oxygen use.
So you have conditional, conditional use, well, conditional use of clubs or.
Yeah, why would it need to be committed?
Isn't that?
Only because we have the medical facilities and.
Isn't that recreational?
Could be, it could, you know, it could, you're.
But if we don't put it somewhere down.
If we define it and we don't put it, then somebody could argue that, yeah, right.
Yeah, so it's gotta be put somewhere down, that was.
Right.
Well, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble with the omitted use business.
With what?
With the omitted use business.
Oh, I think so too.
Any commercial enterprise that receives a fee in return for permission, some recreational activity, including monopoly, to miniature golf courses, tennis courts, indoor facilities, ice rinks, amusement parks, we could put in health clubs and gyms and solve this problem, so you know.
And eliminate the.
Yeah, I, I like that, I think good, good idea, I like that, so are we in agreement to do that?
We're gonna take health clubs as a definition out?
Yeah. Yeah, and we're gonna put it under, uh, re, commercial recreation.
Okay.
Commercial recreation was not allowed in that, we, we have it specified as recreational passive.
Now, we have conditional, it's only conditional.
Is it?
Yeah. Remember, I said, yeah, we like miniature golf clubs.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right, I see it now.
Okay, so take health clubs out, and we'll make it commercial, so that we have one less definition.
Change that definition.
I'm working on it, I got too many windows open right now while we speak, if you don't mind. amusement parks.
Okay, back to the theme.
Health clubs and gyms, how's that?
Is that what the poll did?
Yeah.
If you have one pool, you got a small.
And you can have as many as you want, as long as it's.
Junior, junior, uh, golden banana?
Facility, can do the new style of, uh, dance exercise.
What's that?
Pole dancing.
Is that the new style?
I've seen too many health clubs lately.
Yeah, I talked about pole. Did the Zumba have a pole? Well, so apparently not. I didn't say physical pole, I'm talking structure.
Mr. Turkey.
Just remember, this is being recorded.
This is recorded.
Fine.
Just wanted to remind you.
Well, let them get a laugh at least. Cause they're born to death otherwise, probably.
Well, there are, we don't have a huge following in the beer ship, I must admit.
Since you're revising the version number.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you revise it on your heading as well?
It did, it, here, three.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, three and three.
Look like one from here.
It's social magic. But yeah, we gotta revise there.
I'll just make it final.
Well, under the prohibited uses, do we want to put in, uh, storage guns?
No.
Okay.
No, there was, there was not very much enthusiasm for that.
Right, which is why I was questioning whether.
But I don't think there's any doubt for storage here. There's no doubt with the storage here, it is a crossover.
Okay.
You know, the tavern, it has a real definition of what is a tavern versus.
Restaurants.
Mobile homes, pretty obvious, auto service stations, same sort of thing, pumps issue. I could take auto repair.
No, we're taking.
Adult businesses.
Yeah, I appreciate.
I gotta take.
I just, I just thought we asked.
We have a separate definition for bar as well.
It's, it's just a tavern.
You killed it, didn't you? Can you?
A personal service? I don't have a definition for bar, I don't distinguish it between bar and tavern.
No. But we thought about doing that, and we said, it's too complex. And you, actually, John, you know, back when there were smoking laws, we attached to bars versus taverns, we did have to make a distinction. But since the state's making illegal smoke anywhere.
Except by your campaign.
Unless you're smoking what they say you could.
Except by your campaign.
Yeah, for medicinal purposes only.
Okay, are there?
Or a new cigarette.
That's called recreational.
Are there any other uses or anything that we need to look at?
I'm supposed, the church has a permit on that. And we're taking out pet daycare, is that right?
Yeah, small clubs.
Taking out pet daycare and.
Recreational smoke clubs, so you can bring your own vials and your pipes in.
Multi-family. We did eliminate, yeah, I wanna be sure. And somewhere, I haven't figured out yet, what we also have to do is, we also have to put in a.
One of Maine's finer cities. Well, we allow doo clutches, we say that we allow doo clutches.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we have doo clutches.
And multi-family, or could have been in. What did I have up there?
I also put in schools, but we also have the schools.
Here to college.
Did I go to college in the? This is clubs, not service clubs, change that. Or, there we go. Uh, veterinary hospitals, they suggested that, you gentlemen are all right with that?
No, they said no, actually.
Did you hear that wrong?
Yeah, they have some right up the road, they got one and.
Where?
Clean the ground, remember they said no?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, they have one at the, the skirt.
Right.
Yep.
And then we have, we have, uh, Mamorial too.
We also have one over on, on Hill Road. We have an emergency vet on Hill Road.
But I don't see where that would be a detriment to that locale.
It's just the minutes, I couldn't remember, the minutes that they, they liked the idea of them.
The, the residents did not go for it. So we don't want the board.
I don't know, if, if that's the.
The approved minutes indicate that better.
Veterinary hospital, gotta. Positive, like it won't hurt them.
Yeah, we can leave it in, and if they, if they, if the issue comes up, we can always take it out.
Ted, you should get somebody else to do it for you.
No, it's just, the problem is, I mean, this is an Apple.
Yes, that is the.
So you need you the young person, Ted.
You're not that young yourself. I'm not saying me, I'm saying younger than me.
See, what is it with the old jokes?
This is, we, we are in elementary school, we could get one of those kids to.
They could probably fit in a format my entire computer. I'm using a Microsoft Word on an Apple format, and it's just such a thing.
Well, you mean, Apple has a different format than?
Yeah.
The kind, I, I've never played with it.
It does, they're awful.
Huh?
They're awful.
Is it, or is it, or is it because we, you don't play with it enough to, you don't test it?
I think they're, they're very good for graphic designs and artistically talented people. If you're a numbskull, not so much.
You know the way that.
They don't like spreadsheets?
No.
Click on, trouble with down on the back of all.
They don't like Microsoft Office, huh?
Yeah, cut and paste in, or just type it in.
I'm not gonna do it, I just type it in. Good, fine.
I can't see what you're doing there.
Alright.
It's okay.
We could just get the margins right here also.
Yeah, that's.
Anyway, let's not waste time.
I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll read right back this later.
Okay.
So we're, we're okay with the uses? We have veterinary hospitals in there, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so now, if this takes us over to.
Space and bulk.
Space and bulk. Yeah, we're good.
So do you have our, our line for maximum ability footprint?
Yeah, I do. Maximum, we'll put it at, uh, coverage, we'll put it right at, right in here. Maximum building footprint.
Right.
We don't care if it's sewer or without sewer, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So it's gonna be, point ten thousand square feet gross. I'll just put ten thousand square. And we're okay with all the rest of this?
Open height thirty-five feet.
Yeah, we wanna go higher than that.
Yeah, thirty-five feet's not gonna give you-
No, it's not gonna give me four.
What do you intend to get?
What's the limit of you can squeeze to four? Probably forty-two, forty-four?
Yeah.
So say forty-five.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
How far does a mineral go?
Yeah, what we want.
Okay, that's, that doesn't count.
Okay, no, second thing with staple. Forty-five?
I think forty-five.
Yeah, forty-five.
Yeah.
Well, we got rid of accessory dwelling, uh, accessory, accessory dwelling.
Setback for paper.
Now, why, I just, just put that, to get me smart. Without public water, how does that impact, uh, side and rear setup?
Smaller lot.
No, the lot got by acre.
No, the lot's twenty thousand square feet.
With, with public water.
With public water or sewer.
And one acre.
Yeah, it's significant.
Two hundred by two hundred is, uh, short acreage, so that would be forty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a short half acre right there.
So, I didn't know we were doing a half acre lot.
If they can get water, sewer.
They can get water.
Oh, yeah, well, if they want sewer, that's kinda hard to-
Well, if you only need one. Yeah, I mean, that would be a, a tight squeeze to get a septic field in with anything of, of substance, so. But again, it's just a minimal.
It should be public water, of course. Well, if you went, yeah, I mean, you know, the question is, is that too small, gentlemen?
Twenty thousand square feet probably is.
We can make it with sewer and really torment people.
No, just make the minimum lot size one acre.
Yeah, but you also, if you look into here, you also have some of your lot sizes already in here.
Well, I would go thirty with the, on public water or sewer.
I'll go thirty? That means the state's handing.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. And we are making decisions now.
But they have a small, I'm still trying to understand. They have a smaller piece of land, so we're gonna let their buildings be closer to-
Yeah, because they don't, they don't need the leach field, and they don't have a well.
Well, no, it says or sewer.
No, water or sewer.
It should say sewer both.
Yeah, but it, one eliminates the other, you can leave for the other.
Right. See, you can plute the hell out of well.
If you got public water, you don't have to worry about-
Some limits.
You don't have to worry about a sewer? No, 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 you aren't gonna be floating, so you don't need a well. Taste.
Of course, the poor guy next to you.
He may have an issue.
Still, you still-
Like it's salty. I know.
Yep.
I, I don't. Maybe, maybe we might have to put it in rather than for-
Do whatever you want.
If we were to, if we were to require both, then I would go down to twenty-five. But, you know, twenty thousand's such a small lot.
But there is already public water in that area.
That's, I don't know if everybody's thought that.
But it is available.
It is, but-
Right, so-
It means you have to be on it.
Right. So I-
But if your, if your neighbor's got, if you've got, if you cut your lot, let's say we're one of the properties, bigger properties, I'm gonna cut up my four hundred foot frontage into four little one hundred foot lots. And I'm the one that's next to my residential neighbor on one side and the other one that's next to my business on the other side. And I'm putting in septic fields for each one of them. Because I'm on public water, but my neighbor doesn't have public water and his wells aren't.
It gets salty. But can't you use a community septic?
Yeah, but this is gonna be done individually.
Right, but, well, we don't, are there some, some rules, like, are they D E P or somebody's rules that say you have to be a certain distance? Any leach field has to be a certain distance from-
Has to be, that'll best it with a hundred and fifty.
And that's where, that's where before I had talked about all uses without, having that last column be all uses without public water and sewer. So that if, if you are a totally, uh, you know, standalone parcel without public utilities, that's what you dealt with.
What are you talking about the?
The far right hand.
So there, it's, so it's public water and sewer?
Right.
And sewer or, or sewer?
And.
And sewer.
So what if someone has public water and not sewer?
Then they can go the third.
Well, okay, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that goes-
Right, that wouldn't work.
It's gotta be or.
Yeah, it has to be.
That has to be or.
But what?
But, but the first problem has to be and in a year.
Do you want and there?
I think the first problem has to be and, because if you're gonna get that small, you can't be affecting-
That's right.
You're right, you're right. It, it, it has to, it has to say and.
Does that take care of that problem of causing a, a problem with neighbors if you're too fat?
Should I talk to Jim about this? I, nobody's mine- H H E two hundred, you do an H H E two hundred. Uh, you have to be a hundred feet, septic's gotta be a hundred feet from the well.
Septic, right.
Do you have to, do you have to identify a neighbor's well?
I don't think so.
That's what I'm, I'm pretty sure you, it has to be a hundred feet within your own property.
Right, right.
And go with it. So, and that's where I think the, the key for a sort of a lot size bonus with public utilities is that it's all solely, solely on public utilities.
So you wanna make it and and.
I would.
Okay.
If, if they get it run, then it's there.
Well, this is an incentive.
Which one are you talking?
No, no, it's not an incentive, but-
It said, currently says it was out, so you wanna be it.
Talking about the middle column back.
That's the way we're talking about key. So then you gotta have water and sewer to get that, that, that seep pump separate.
Yep.
Well. But if you're, if you are hooked up to public water, but don't have sewer, would you call, do you call it just?
The far, right, the far, right.
You'd be that tough.
Cause you need public water and sewer. So if you've got water and sewer, you're in the left, if you don't, you're in the right.
You know, we have such lousy soils out there anyways, we probably want both. Cause I mean, it's, we're sitting on gravel.
Shouldn't the right hand just say or, if you don't have either one, then you're in that column?
No, cause if you read that, it says all uses without public water or sewer. So if I had public water, but I didn't have sewer, where would I fit?
Well, I had the same question, using the and.
That's a good, I think that's why you have to say and.
Because and, and says you have to have both of them.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, or says one or the other, right? And or makes sense to me.
But to make it consistent with the, the column to the left, you pretty much, you have everything, but all uses with public water and sewer. And if you don't have both of them, you're in the right, the right hand column.
Basically, that is. So what it's saying is that you get reduced setbacks. If you have, there aren't much of a, there's not much of a setback there. There's not much of a, what you have for an advantage is you can get in the lot, you also get eighty percent coverage.
Right.
And which is big.
Side and rear setbacks are ten feet, seventy feet.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I, listen, I didn't see any benefit to all of this. Thing except for five feet on the side and the, and the rear zip.
Twenty percent.
Just make it one acre, just use the one column. Because everybody out there has, has, they're either on it already, on the water, or they could attach to it.
I just assume they all get on the water.
Yeah.
Huh? I'm just assuming they all get on the water, but that costs money, people have wells, you know, they've had wells out there for years.
That was like turning on the water.
To put in a household service.
The water did not go down the Procter road.
Are you, are you saying that it should just be one acre regardless?
You will, if you read the two cheeks now, I mean, we've got the thirty thousand that's changed.
Yeah.
The only changes in these two columns are ten feet and fifteen feet from the minimal side and rear side setback. So this is one hell of a, a graph to show a five foot difference, and I can put the dent over here, I don't care.
Also lot coverage.
Lot coverage is big, lot coverage is very big.
And I think, I think having it in there-
As a lot.
Is that it will help support a, an effort to get sewer.
Exactly, that's why I put it in.
From a, from an economic development standpoint.
And it was the same thing also in townhouse, you know, we have the same thing in there for the same reason, because we have water right up to the town boundary. And what we do with, with townhouse water was get some neighborhood- And get some neighborhood action to get the extension of the water. Water industry doesn't wanna do it, but if they get a lot of, they say, well, I'm gonna get, you know, I'm gonna get X number of more customers on this. And those customers, I'll be willing to do that, so who's gonna have to pay for it in the town?
So this one shouldn't-
Sides are gonna go through a grant for rural water. Yeah.
Townhouse water has water to where?
Right up to the boundary.
Can you go forward, Mike?
Now we need to read the net development density underneath that.
Yep.
You say the Graze Hall has water?
No.
The last, the last part of that whole thing, we've got multi-family residential density shall not be, we don't allow that by name.
Yep, I'll take it out now.
Yep.
We had it originally, then we took it out, and I haven't changed it here yet.
So that, that can come out.
The only question I ask, and I'm always willing to, not always follow the complaint completely, but remember the complaint committee did say that you gotta have multi-family as part of a mixed use project?
No, but it was made clear that it was in that single family. Uh, and duplex or, or two family.
Yeah.
As standalone.
Right.
Multi-family is a duplex, but, um, well, there are definitely three more.
Three more units.
Can you, can you tell me what that sentence says under net development density?
Lots created after, uh-
After June tenth, two thousand fifteen, and density for residential duplex units shall meet the net. I, it, it doesn't sound right when I read it to me, so I need help.
I think the and should be that.
That, that may be what it is, cause it just-
Boy, there is something missing here, what's, what's missing? Lots created after, thank you.
Change A and to the B. Lots created after June tenth, twenty fifteen, the density for residential duplex.
Yep.
I bet it should be those, uh-
How about, if it says-
Four bucks.
How about if it says density for residential duplex units created after June tenth of two thousand fifteen shall meet the requirements?
I like that, yeah.
Well, it's the lots, the lots and, and the density, and the, and the density requirements, and the density requirements. For residential, what? For residential duplex units shall meet the net development density requirement specified in eight one four.
We haven't changed that, eight one three, that's something else. Cause eight one three above is probably a new use.
Right, yeah. That's because I put in prohibited uses, so that that needs to change to eight one four. So what it's saying is that you gotta meet the net residential density for any lot that's created after we do this. Net residential density, um, for that lot, um, any new lot, it's gotta be the net residential density. And if you're doing the duplex, it's gotta be-
Oh, I knew what, I knew what you wanted me to say, I was looking at just home, there was something missing. Okay, so let's look at the definitions. With any luck, we can get through these quickly.
Oh, we already done, yeah, we've done these. These are all definite, these are definitions we've already gone over.
Okay, so I put them in here because they're related to, remember we were having questions on what, uh, different uses?
Well, you can take pet daycare out.
We should, we should have a, a motion to accept this eight one as corrected tonight.
Yeah, but are you taking pet daycare out?
Yes, it's all the stuff that we've got in here that we've taken out.
Yeah, but I'm just saying the definition you have in the back.
Well, the definition is gonna be the definition section.
So put it right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying it's not in the use, so it shouldn't be in the definition for-
Those definitions won't be right there in the, in that zoning chapter, so we see where, yeah, I do, yeah, oh, yeah, we've-
So we'll wait for Bob to come back, and then if we can get a motion, we can vote on this and put it to bed.
Well, we can vote themselves.
I'm gonna bring up the question one more time, guys, okay? And that is basically, remember the complaint committee asked that that you're gonna have multi-family in a mixed res, in a mixed development? So if you have a second floor on your, your, uh, on your business, you can put in multi-family. And we're saying no, we're not gonna do that.
We're saying that.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
We're saying multi-family.
We took multi-family out, I just wanna be sure we understand that.
But it says two family dwelling.
Yeah, two family, but not the multi.
Single family and two family dwelling, well, what's a single family, isn't that a single family of a business?
One, but if you wouldn't, let's say you had a ten thousand square foot building, you wanna put three of them.
Then that, you can't.
Oh.
That's what I said. That's why I was asking that question.
So where you instruct multi-family as a conditional use?
Upon size of the building.
Do you put it, a multi-family, um, only as part of a mixed use?
On the size of the building.
And we don't, we don't necessarily, we're not trying to encourage.
Right.
Regional dwellings.
No, we're not. What's your, how do we say this?
George, what?
I would say, yeah.
Lake George.
Oh.
Will we put the way it is? The one thing they did say, and I'm just thinking about this now, just caught it, I'm sorry, should have caught this sooner. Remember, they did say that subdivision, residential subdivisions shall be excluded.
Yes.
And so it should be single family and two family, what we should have, we've gotta have an exclusion here that you cannot have a, a residential subdivision.
Non-permitted use.
Right.
Right. Done, thank you.
What's that? It's a non-permitted use.
It's a non-permitted use. Yeah.
Prohibited uses, right there.
Now, we're kind of, by putting all these prohibited uses, we're kinda-
Hoping you're ourselves out.
Yeah, but you're going with omitted uses, but then you have to do prohibited uses.
Well, the only reason I'm doing the prohibited uses, again, is because, you know, there, there's, there's interpretive gray area between some of the, some of those uses right there.
I know, but-
But don't you think that gives somebody a legal argument to say, hey, this isn't one of your prohibited uses?
No. No, that's been tested before.
That's also not one of our conditional uses.
It's been tested before. The, the reason we do this is to emphasize that in this situation where, where something is gray, that, that is not permitted. That, the gray area is not permitted, that's the only reason we do it. I can take automobile service stations out of there, but, you know, mobile homes, I don't know how, we're not gonna do that, tavern's the same thing.
Put them in, yeah, just, you see in camera two, your picture list above.
Okay. Residential subdivisions.
Multifamily and residential.
Residential subdivisions, uh.
Isn't that enough prohibited uses, residential subdivision?
Yes. Because of our definition of a subdivision.
Look what happened, let me, did your.
Yeah, the, the, it's all up on the top.
I'll take your. I'll take your.
Yeah, we get, we get one.
Well, what I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna transfer this over to the, to the windows.
Go. Can we get, can we get a motion on eight one? We'll do the entire, this entire document in one motion? Or do you wanna break it up and do it in each section?
Well, we already did different problems, we already did.
Right, we, we've talked about the whole thing, I think we should just vote on it as, as a single document, eight one, the Gateway District.
I, I make a motion to accept eight point one, Gateway District as corrected this evening.
Okay, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Gateway District as corrected as of October twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? It is unanimous, wonderful.
Something to, something to.
At any moment.
Yeah, well, at, at public hearing, something may come up.
Oh, yes.
But if, if it doesn't, we're good to go, and we can just sit down.
Even if it does, it doesn't necessarily mean that we've gotta go change it.
That's right.
That's right.
We don't have to change it.
Exactly. Just because one person says something doesn't necessarily mean that here, all of that hour conversation was a bad one.
But this, this is good because it now allows us to move on. So we've got DB one, DB two, townhouse corner, gateway district, they're done.
We don't have our, we don't have our design standards yet.
Well, let's get, not tonight.
We can put them in there at the next meeting.
All right.
Boy, jump me on nine o'clock.
Yeah.
You have a dinner time?
No, it's dinner time.
Do you remember when we were, we were so tired because of you.
No, but didn't stop ya. Okay, on to the planners report.
Yeah, we got ten minutes.
That's why we were there, beloved.
Okay, planners report, um, I'm gonna beat Marty to it. No news on seasonal cottages, although I did talk to Joe two days ago, um, we're discussing bonds. And Joe may have to come back to see you guys because he wants, he's looking at maybe an alternative arrangement for performance standards. And I said, not without the planning board's involvement.
They only allow three ways, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the amount of money and, uh, and I'm telling Joe, I've already delivered the message, and he's thinking about it, I said, look, it's based on three things, and it's based on your first phase and how much activity you're gonna be doing for the infrastructure. And actually there, right now, what's interesting about it is he's gotta start blasting. What they're doing is they're doing their blasting this winter, it's a good time to do it, you know? And everything's froze up, a lot less runoff problems and so forth. Why? When you do your blasting, you're not gonna do it in phases, he's gonna blast the whole road up, which is much more, you know, you might need to get your crew out there, so. He's awarded the contract, so he's gotta come up with a, he's gotta, he's made an, an, an offer, I've said I'm not gonna accept that, that is, it's, uh, it's either all or nothing, and if you wanna change it, come to the point, so he may be coming to the planning board this week.
Well, they have, what about a, a letter of credit, um, third party?
Tri-party agreement?
Tri-party and.
Well, a bond which you can't get.
And the real bond, yeah.
Bonds are pretty much.
A letter of credit. But we, but it's so hard about that.
I don't know.
Unless they're not good for it.
There's that. Well, it's tying up a lot of money, the letters of credit these days, it's not just your good faith and credit, it, it's actually, I mean, cash in the bank.
Yeah, it has to be accessible.
Has to be accessible, and your good faith and credit, it's not like the US government, so.
Yeah, but it doesn't work anymore.
That's right, that's why everybody's gonna have the cash in hand.
At least the cottages out in the woods are started.
Okay, so anything else going on?
Uh, let's see, I had, uh, once again, our, our, uh, lovely exemptions for your private waste standards are just going forward full bore. I could make a living out of this thing, we had two yesterday, uh, two on Wednesday.
What's that again?
Yesterday, yeah. Uh, exemptions.
Right, what?
Private away exemptions, I had two, one on Tipton Lane and one on.
You need to tell all those people to come and vote, I think.
I should, uh, Branch Brook Fuels, they got theirs, so. They'll be coming with their tank farm and probably another one, so. So we've got two that have their, uh, two new, uh, exemptions.
But it's also improving those roads, I heard.
It's not really, I'm not getting a lot of improvements, gentlemen, to be honest with you.
What you're saying.
I'm trying to, and the disaster ones, yes, I mean, the, the one that I got the most improvements were on West Lane. Where I got whole sections of that reconstructed.
Where's that?
That's off of Lymick Road.
It's where?
Many West places.
Oh.
But the, uh, you know, Tipton Lane, I'm getting a brand new cul, I'm getting a hammerhead at the end and some improvements at the end. But, uh, the, the road needs the minimum standards, remember that standard, being able to get a fire truck in there is not that hard of a standard. Getting a, turning around the ladder truck, most operators can work with most stuff, but in this case, Tipton Lane, he's building, he's building a area.
Yeah, it's, it's not a question of whether or not the operator can work around based on that, whether, you make it big enough so that the operator doesn't have to mickymazzen around.
Exactly, have a CBL, that's most of your drivers' dollar. So that went well, um, so I've got two of those left, that was two on Tipton Lane, so Tipton Lane's tapped out. Old Saw Mill Road is tapped out, um, and I've got, uh, I've got an expansion of a, a business that may be coming to us, um, on Route one. They're moving, they're having a hard time reconciling themselves to that and come to you folks, but hopefully they'll reconcile that. Uh, there will be a site plan, creep out of four or five thousand square foot additional to this system of business, so. He's been, still, uh, probably wanna know what's going on in Southern Main.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're proceeding along, they've done a lot of work, probably noticed it, if anybody's been out there, they've got their second, you know, their new access point in.
Yeah, but the building's still not touched.
There's, there's that issue, yeah.
Still.
Yeah, I think that's gonna take a while to write again.
Yeah, they're probably, they're probably gonna not touch anything until they finish investigating.
Which building collapsed?
The new one.
Oh, yeah, you weren't around. Yeah, Paul Gabois' dad got injured, he was inside with my dad. He was shifting.
They did a lock table drain, all across, it was like dominos.
It's like matchsticks, if you want, but, so.
Yeah.
He's a very lucky man.
He's a very lucky man. Well, if he had a sheath, it wouldn't come down, but if it was sheath, he would probably not survive.
Right, right.
But that, that project is.
It's looking good, except for the building.
Yeah, that was the whole point, it was the building.
Yeah.
So, um.
Building was your favorite project.
Right, oh, I do, I have it completely rented. I also have, uh, I, I have to check something out, but I was wondering if you gentlemen would sign something?
I'll probably not find it.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if I can find it, why is it not here?
What are you running for?
I'm, uh, running away.
Running from.
Running from. Kate's Butter Barn, I still don't, I need you to sign this, this is the original, this is the paper copy, this is where the building permits are, you can see.
You're talking about the, the, the barn?
The, the, the cow barn. You wanted to sign it? That's right in here.
I got that, but they built it and.
Yes, you voted on that. The conditions are approved, but for some reason, I can't find, there's a discussion on whether or not. But they've gotta figure, I, I don't remember signing it, you know? I don't remember you guys ever signing, so, uh, so we're having a discussion on that, but what's happened with the barn is that, right now, the guys who did the, uh, foundation, didn't go to the reinforcement, oh, yeah. Yeah.
They're just going, oh, geez.
Yeah, so, um, so it's unwhole, which is why nothing's happened, and, uh, so we got a third party inspection going on, third party engineering, the engineers are actually coming to visualize on this, and, but we've gotta have this thing signed just so we can proceed.
Done.
With resolution.
Wait a minute, we can't sign this, cause there's no signature block.
Uh, Bob, we're others, we can't, we don't sign that, I don't think.
Nope.
There's no signature block, and we've, we've always made it.
I think you could read that when they also put in this new foundation, they were still five feet off of.
That's the other thing they're going to do, they're gonna get a certificate that it's exactly where it's shown on this plan before they can proceed, that's why this plan is critical. This is the approved plan, and they have to show that, that, that where they put it, um, is where it's supposed to be, because as you know, the drainage on this is absolutely critical. And I, you know, as I, you heard me tell, tell Luke, I want those inverted, if you, if you, if you designed the tents, I want to build the tents. You know, all of those, all of that drainage has gotta be perfect, exactly, you, you mess with this, it's gonna, it could really impact that level spread, we're gonna mess up. So that's why third party engineering, you got third party engineering and the surveyor's gonna give a certification that, that, that foundation is what's shown on that plan.
What about the signature block?
That, this is, this is what we're using right now.
We've rejected it before because it did not have a signature block.
Right, but you approved the plan, we're having, there's an issue on where those, those plans are, they, and this isn't.
Well, I think the Kate, the Kate's Butter Land before the board, but I think the barn one, stay reviewed.
No, no. You guys approved what, I guess you, you signed it.
The issue was the sidewalk and everything.
Yeah.
Well, we did sidewalk and everything else, and also too, that's when they wanted to delay it because they were supposedly, uh, the, uh, butter was up there the other day. And then.
What was the?
You weren't, we weren't gonna vote on it.
Came out of the pump, pump, pump class, if they were.
Some, did it with the Kate's Butter because it turned, and we voted on it to, to accept it, to, uh.
That was regarding, you know, the landscaping.
Yeah, it was, they're giving money instead, so.
And they, they are supposed to be installing this, this month, and they gotta, I, I haven't seen it installed yet, so. We're gonna have to be on top of that, but yes, once again, we have another litigation situation.
Who drew the plan out?
PH two N.
Who?
PH two N. Fine engineer, it's, it's not a question of doing the plan, they just did the site plan, the actual engineering, the foundation plan, associated engineers, I think, did it, the structures.
But weren't there was a difference in the heights?
Yeah, that was the grading, that was, that was PH two N, and they were actually lower on the grading, which I was okay with, than what they showed originally on the original plans. Um, I was fine with that because it, it maintained the same inverted elevations, that's all I cared about. Keep the same inverted elevations, I don't care how much concrete you're showing. Actually, lesser concrete, and in this, in this case, the issue of what, of what, where it is and how much fill is gonna be against it, is an issue from a structural standpoint, cause there's no reinforcement in it. So if they're piling extra soil on it, you know, there's a rotation potential, because we don't, I don't even know if it's keyed in, so. Not my problem, I'm not the structural diagnostic, that's the structural engineers, the three structural engineers are gonna slug it out on this.
That was like one quarter.
Anything else?
One third of the hundred triangle, ten to two.
No, no, I'm, uh, that's all set for the moment. Oh, it's, uh, we're resuming, one thing I'd like to tell you is that we are resuming, uh, uh, search for the town hall site, and we'll collect with several people. Uh, also, um, I am slugging away on turning the new format, I think I told you at the last meeting that we're not, we're doing it in-house. I'm slugging away at changing our existing ordinance into the new format.
Any idea as to a timeframe on that, cause I know, uh, it's gonna, there's gonna be a joint public hearing? There's two, two different things that are gonna be part of that, part of the.
Yeah, no, that's, Joe, Joe's stuff is being put up because of this.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I'm getting kicked on it, but I'm gonna do it as fast as I can.
I just, I just didn't know if you had.
Well, one last meeting in November, so that'll be the whole way through.
And December.
And December. And December.
Who's there?
Both on Thursday.
They're both on Thursday, but who's looking?
Okay, okay, all right.
That's all I've got, gentlemen.
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
I thought Marty was gonna teach you.
Yeah, me too, I thought Marty was all, he was.
Brian for ten minutes.
I'm ready to go.
I'm hungry.
Yeah, true.